I don't have a mic. I will, I do. Barbara Brennan?
Here.
Brett Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
And then? Sat Paul Sadoo?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me for the flag ceremony? Let's introduce the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Couple of quick announcements if you have your cell phone with you. Please turn it off or it's a bribery. And if you're going to be handing out any favor to council members, please give a copy to our staff over here. We did have, we had a little different sound arrangement in here tonight. We had failure this morning that our cameraman was so awesome to bring a system in to help us out this evening. We really appreciate it. Excuse me. So we still want you to get up close to the mic and speak clearly in it. And we're only using one podium tonight in our public hearings and our public sessions. So this is the only podium we'll be using tonight. With that, we will go ahead and go into our public hearings. The audience members who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of the meeting will be called first. You'll be asked to form a line on this side, please. If you're unable to sign up before the meeting started, that's fine. We will make sure that you get a chance to speak at the end. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak on this subject. Council staff will keep track of your time, and give you the 30-second warning. And at time of, they will give you a time. Let's see. Our first public hearing is in accordance to document in Washington County Code Title 20 zoning relating to waiver of spacing requirements between marijuana production facilities and community centers in rural agricultural and rural forestry districts and amending the definition of community center.
Mr. Chairman, Gary Davis, Washington County Planning. We had a discussion this afternoon about this issue, and I don't have anything to add to that. I only wanted to note that I have made corrections to that funding. That funding number one in the draft ordinance would read the outstanding submitted application for amendments to Washington County Title 20 zoning to allow a waiver of required 1,000 distance between marijuana production facility and a community center with a written agreement from that center in the rural agriculture and rural forestry district. And just mail that to the clerk. So that will be the end of the filing.
And may I file for you? Okay, thank you, Gary. We have one person who's signed up, Ezra Iguimera. Inside, please.
Before, this is very simple, a little addition to the marijuana code for this county. There was one producer processor who's been in limbo now for a year and a half because of just some wording we didn't know about in the county code. And this doesn't change anything about the zoning or the buffers or anything. It just gives a good neighbor the option to allow the facility to move forward if they don't think it'll be a problem for them. So thank you for the consideration and urge adoption of the text amendment. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us about spacing requirements between marijuana production facilities and community centers? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and turn it back to council. Will council like to do it?
I'm approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion, please, Bernard?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's very clear to people that all this does is allow for a waiver in distance if the neighboring community center or church or somebody is agreeable. It won't allow it unless that happens.
I did have one question, Gary. What if a community center changes ownership or management or something in which they may change their mind?
It would be subject to the original signature at the time, so that it wouldn't be taken away. I don't think there's a provision for it.
It wouldn't be grandfathered. If a new owner or managing opposition, it would go back to the way it was.
No.
Okay, sorry.
No, it would, yeah, it's a one-time deal. When it comes in, there's a signature. If there's a signature, then it's permitted. A permit would not be taken away as it's written right now.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes 6-0 with Mr. Manix here. Oh, excuse me, we've got to do the vote. Please call it.
Barbara Brennan?
Yes.
Brett Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sadoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
That passes 6-0 with Mr. Manix here. Our next public hearing is on an ordinance establishing speed limit on a portion of the North Shore Road. Do we have any staff report at all? Don't see one. We will open the public hearing, and first person is Dwayne Duckser.
All right, Dwayne Duckser. 2964 North Shore Road. 40 miles and taller. So I think they're managing with a petition to ask for a 30 mile on it. But I'm not here to support that, but also maybe talk about 25 miles now. So our road in that section, the residences are divided from the beach front by North Shore Road and to go back and forth to the beach to the house. It's not the same road all day. And that speed limit was 40 miles an hour. And I took a drive over to Lake Wacom Boulevard on the south of the lake, and it's exactly the same situation divided by the road. It's 25 miles an hour over there, and it's also in the county. So I'm looking at comparables here, and we have increasing traffic on North Shore Road. When the Lake Wacom Park is expanded, the county documents say that traffic will go up to 100,000 visits per year, up from 54,888 right now, 54,000, so an increase of 46,000. So that also concerns us tremendously because we walk across that road all the time. Okay? So that's what we're asking.
You've seen this, right? What they came up with?
What, who came up with?
What staff came up with?
No, I haven't seen it.
Was it staff?
What did you say?
Okay. I went on this.
Yes.
I have a question for staff, maybe, does anyone here from Public Works?
I do not see anyone.
Okay, because I, when I read this, I just thought it was 35, what you had requested was 35, and this is 35, not 30 or 25.
Well, that's all they're going to give us is five miles an hour less. It's only going to be five miles an hour less.
Okay.
That's what it's going to be.
So until 35 is acceptable?
Oh, I think it should be less than that because it's, you know, it's just like across the lake, and that's 25 over there. At 35, you know, people typically would go 40.
No, I hear what you're saying, and you gave me boots to come out here. Right, I didn't even look at that. But I'm interested, I would like, and I don't, I wouldn't do it if there's none in support, but I'm interested in a table in this to get this.
Let's wait till we close the public hearing before we do that.
Oh, right. I thought it was an unimportant question. Okay, you're right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us on speed limits on North Shore Road? If seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Bernard, we're back to council.
Yeah, I would like to, since it is comparable to 25, and the 25, it says it's not in the city. I always thought that 25 on Lake Wacom Boulevard was what's in the city, but it's not, so I don't know what the difference is.
It's not Lake Wacom.
Oh.
It's North Shore.
Oh, North Shore. And North Shore's 25?
No.
40?
40.
Okay. I'm, I, okay. I wouldn't mind asking if they could lower it beyond that, but.
What was that to do?
I'm interested in holding it in committee till we can get a few comments from our Public Works people.
Is that your motion?
Okay.
Do you second him?
Yeah, the petition asked.
It does, it says 30.
And staff recommended 35, and I agree. It would pass soon.
Well, only because we don't usually do 30, but if we did 25 somewhere in the county part of that, of the Lake Wacom watershed, then, and it's comparable, I don't know why we would go to 25 or 30. That's my only question I'd like to get answered. So yeah, I'll move to table.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes unanimously, that will be table. Okay, next up is resolution providing for submission to the qualified voters of Wacom County at an election to be held on November 7, 2017, an advisory ballot seeking citizen input regarding the use of eminent domain by pipeline companies to take property rights from private landowners for use in oil and gas pipelines in Wacom County. Mr. Donovan, would you like to introduce this?
I would like to introduce this. So consider it. I can talk about it now.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know we had comments for it. Yeah, my day job, I guess, is I study direct democracy. I spent my career studying representation works and how public votes on issues give signals to elected officials that lead to better policy. So that's, you know, my, one of my sort of reasons for being interested in this. The proposal is to ask voters, I can actually, I can read this, to put an advisory vote on the ballot that would say, "Wacom County Council seeks citizen input regarding the use of eminent domain for oil and gas pipelines. The measure will advise elected officials whether there is citizen opposition to the use of eminent domain for oil and gas pipelines. Should local, state, and federal elected officials representing Wacom County work to prevent and limit the use of eminent domain to take property rights from private landowners for use in oil and gas pipelines." And maybe the main motivating thing for this is I think Washington's statutes, the RCW's for eminent domain use in these circumstances are inadequate, and I think we would all benefit from a discussion about that and an advisory vote where we see what the people of Wacom County want to tell, not, not just local and federal, this is really, it's a state statute that threatens our ability to deal with pipelines that are potentially targeting Wacom County. So I'm not going to get into all the whereas's, but that's, that's my main interest in this.
Okay. We will open the public hearing. We have some folks signed up. Amy Glasser, Tyson Green, and Everett Barton.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham. Yes, please. Great idea. Love it. Thank you, Todd. Please do it. Please do it. Wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyson Green. I'm here to make a statement about the proposed resolution. I'm an operations manager for Williams Northwest Pipeline up in Wacom, in Wacom and Skagit County. And our offices are up in Sumas, Washington, on the border where our facility was built in 1956. The pipeline system we operate has provided the Pacific Northwest and the state of Washington with clean, reliable natural gas for the past 61 years. The natural gas we ship every day to Puget Sound Energy, to Avista, to Cascade helps heat homes, produce electricity, and fuel industry. Each year, we transport about 90% of the natural gas consumed in the state of Washington. The natural gas that moves through our pipelines has been responsible for significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions during the past 20 years that is used to replace coal-fired power plants. It's also making renewables like solar and wind more viable because it serves as a supplemental energy source when the sun isn't shining or the wind isn't blowing. It's also a critical component in the manufacturing process of countless consumer products that we all enjoy every day. Williams is proud of the contribution that we've made to this community, to Wacom County, and on average, we pay $624,000 in added alarm taxes each year. The topic of eminent domain in our industry is a very sensitive one, one that we do not take lightly, and I assure you that no energy company wants to obtain easements through the use of eminent domain. We at Williams work very hard to be good neighbors and a positive force in the communities in which we work and operate. Whether performing normal operations, maintenance, or construction activities, we go out of our way to work with the landowners and address their concerns. We return our work areas to the same or even better condition than we found them. Regarding the resolution before the county today should have passed, I intend to serve on the committee that will draft, draft the language to help the citizens of Wacom County better understand how eminent domain, while rarely used, is important to bringing this critical infrastructure that truly benefits the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to participate in the dialogue.
Everett, and then Anna Ray Miller, and then Lynn Murphy.
Everett Barton. Wacom County resident since 1994, Puget District, Puget subdivision resident right now. My interest in addressing this is, well, twofold. I think if it's, if it's targeting Cherry Point, I think we have tribe to deal with, and the tribe should be the one that's doing the arbitration or the decision-making on who's going to go out there, and then, and then the eminent domain would follow on after that. And the second one is with the climate of property owners, I don't own property, so I'm speaking as a shareholder, and the cohort of shareholders that I speak for is kind of amusedly looking at this property issue that's come up with the Hearst decision. And the, the idea is, would be that, well, what do you mean? I can't do anything with my property or my, you know, now you're asking me to give it to the pipeline or give it to infrastructure? In other words, it's kind of a sardonic way of saying, oh, so now, now we can't develop our property, all we can do is give it to the, give it to the infrastructure, you know? And so, so that's kind of a, I'm just saying, that could be cropping up in people's minds as you, as you prepare that language for the ballot. So those are the only two things I want to say, but I think it's, I think it's important to know that if something's targeting Cherry Point, that really it's not a county situation, it's the tribe. The lummies will make the decision, the decision at that as to who they're going to allow in there. And, and the other thing is language that property owners, people who own property and who are discouraged because of the Hearst decision, Hearst decision, might have this sardonic attitude towards it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Ray, and then Lynn.
Hi, I, my name's Anna. I'm a student at Western Washington studying environmental policy, and I fully support the measure to limit the use of eminent domain to take property rights from private landowners for the use of oil and gas pipelines. Currently, there's two pipelines that are being considered in Wacom County, and our residents are at risk to be forced to accept these pipeline easements across their private property through the use of eminent domain. And these pipeline easements are of concern for many reasons. Once granted eminent domain, these companies have the authority to inspect property at any time, and these inspections, inspections can take the form of physically digging up the land, or aerial flyovers, or even internal inspections performed by smart machines. Additionally, these pipeline companies, once granted eminent domain authority, they have the full right to clear, modify, or block access to parts of land, as well as tell property owners where they, what they can do with their land and where they can build. During the construction of a lot of these pipeline easements, soil can be replaced, and it can cause problems with crops or noxious weeds in water storage. And these spills and accidents with pipelines not only threaten groundwater supplies, but they can also cause permanent damage to property infrastructure and vegetation. And this not only affects property values, but it can also is hazardous, these hazardous liquids are a direct threat to human health. I think that the people of Wacom County are at risk of having their property rights be subject to these easements to the proposed pipelines such as the Island Gas Connector Pipeline, which would require permanent easements from landowners through 34 miles of Wacom County between Sumas and Birch Bay. And then additionally, the Kinder Morgans attempting to expand their Trans Mountain Pipeline to carry oil from Alberta through Sumas to Cherry Point and Adacordus, which would also require easements from property owners in Wacom County. And both these proposed projects could result in granting eminent domain to pipelines for easements if the property owners of Wacom County are unwilling to sell. So in order to protect the people of Wacom County from having their property be subjected to these pipeline easements, I think we should be proactive and protect citizens' property rights now instead of waiting until it's too late. Yeah, so I think that the Wacom County Council should let the citizens of Wacom County decide whether to let the use of eminent domain be used for oil and gas pipelines.
Lynn?
May be counsel Lynn Murphy with Puget Sound Energy. Just to remind you all about our service territory, we do serve electricity here in Wacom County, and we have about 90,000 electric customers in Wacom County. We do not serve natural gas customers up here, but we do serve them in Snohomish, King County, and Pierce County and further counties spotting south of here. So we do not serve natural gas in Wacom County. However, we do have a 3.7 mile natural gas line that runs from Huntington, B.C. to Sumas Generating Station, or Sumas Generating Station produces about 125 megawatts of electricity, serving 94,000 households, most of those here in Wacom County. While this particular pipeline was likely installed using right-of-way and private easements, it was not, it was not obtained using eminent domain. However, if we had to use eminent domain, we would have utilized that in such a way where we would have worked and negotiated with the, the private landowner as much as possible. There are times where we will look at and negotiate with private landowners for years to ensure that everybody comes out positive, with a positive outlook. PSC only uses eminent domain if we cannot negotiate a voluntary acquisition of a necessary property rights. PSC's preference is always and first to try to negotiate, as I said, a voluntary acquisition. When PSC acquires property rights through the condemnation process, PSC always pays property owners just compensation in accordance with the law. I'd like to convey to council that the advisory ballot measure could have unintended consequences to everyday utility services, and they could drastically be impacted by your, your work to prevent or limit the use of eminent domain for oil and gas pipelines. For example, PSC's ability to serve our current electric and natural gas customers and potential and future growth here in the region. While eminent domain is not utilized on every project, in fact, it's very rarely used, as Williams Pipeline mentioned earlier, it is a tool in our toolbox that allows us to serve our customers reliably and efficiently. I would ask you not to pass the resolution for the advisory ballot regarding the use of eminent domain while it may have, as it may have unintended consequences for public utility users and customers. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our sign-up list. Does anyone else like to speak to us about eminent domain? Come on down.
Good evening, council. I'm Pam Brady from Bellingham, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my employer, BP. BP is the operator of Olympic Pipeline System, an interstate common carrier pipeline that transmits gasoline, diesel, and jet fuel from the four northwest Washington refineries, including BP Cherry Point Refinery in Phillips 66 here in Wacom County, to markets in the Puget Sound area, to southwest Washington and Portland, Oregon. And I wish to express my company's concern about the council's proposed resolution to submit an advisory ballot seeking citizen input regarding use of eminent domain by pipeline companies. We're concerned that efforts to weaken eminent domain is contrary to the public's interest with regards to pipeline safety. Our interest on this issue is pretty narrow. Our perspective is that of an operator of a built system, one that has been in the ground for 45 years. In order to conduct maintenance on the pipeline system, we sometimes need to acquire temporary access easements. Temporary access beyond the existing width of the right-of-way could be needed for any number of reasons, including staging of materials, staging trucks and equipment, creating safe shoring for our pipeline workers, and avoiding sensitive areas. Pipeline operators do not use eminent domain indiscriminately. In fact, it's rarely used, and we work very hard not to use it. But nonetheless, it's an important tool for the pipeline company in maintaining pipeline safety and integrity. Imagine if a landowner were to refuse to grant a temporary construction easement to an area of the pipeline in need of repair. Should one single landowner be able to prevent the pipeline from conducting needed maintenance? Doesn't the entire community and the region benefit from a well-maintained pipeline? I have some other concerns with the proposal as well. I believe it was introduced without stakeholder input, and some concerns with the language as well. It purports to measure citizen concern about the misuse of eminent domain, but the lawful use of eminent domain cannot be construed as misuse. And I think that the council should take a step back and have a public hearing and take the time it needs to more thoughtfully consider all of the issues before you take action. Thank you.
My name is Jack McBride. I live in Bellingham. I don't, in general, I think the thrust of the referendum is, is good, and I think it's very worthwhile. In researching this a little bit, I was very surprised to see how Washington law essentially allows eminent domain by private companies. They've, I mean, eminent domain is based on the public use and the public need, and that they have, apparently, Washington law has said that private companies can use the same criteria and can take advantage of that. And, and I think that, I think that's questionable. I think at best, those kinds of situations should be on a case-by-case basis, based on the need and the appropriateness within the community. For example, the pipelines that we're considering here are going to take Canadian oil products and more than likely ship them out of the country for processing and sale elsewhere. So the net benefit to Wacom and to the state of Washington is going to be minimal. I mean, once the pipeline is built, the, the risk and the, the ongoing risk of, and the existence of those pipelines will not return much benefit to this area. And the risk is, and the risk to the, not just to the land and the, and the, and within the county, but the increased traffic through the Salish Sea is a major issue and should be considered a major issue. If we go from five oil tankers a month up to 35 a month, which is some of the figures that I've seen out of, out of Cherry Point, that is a significant increase. We also have a situation going on now where Petrogas has bought the pier from Alcoa, so they can ship out LPG gas. And they have their advertising, and they're, they're going to expand the, their distribution of LPG gas out of the Alcoa piers too. So, so there's, there's a bigger picture at play here, and so I think, I think that these things need to be looked at more closely and individually as, as part of a larger picture. But, so I think the only point that I would make finally here is that, I think I would try to, to look at the wording on the ballot here and try to make some distinction between the public and private use issue as it applies to eminent domain, because, anyway, public use, eminent domain makes sense. Private use, not so sure. Thank you.
Mike Senet, Bellingham, Washington.
Mike Senet, Bellingham, Washington. While acknowledging the current use and utility of existing pipelines for our local use and statewide use, I would oppose the use of Watcom County property for the transshipment of gas or oil from Canada to foreign exports, for foreign exports. Doesn't serve our county any benefit. As a previous property owner in Birch Bay, whose land was mostly wetlands, I would have opposed any taking of my property for that purpose. And Pam Brady spoke of the misuse of eminent domain, and I believe any use of eminent domain by companies seeking to export fossil fuels from Canada without benefit to Watcom County would be a misuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us on this topic? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And what's the wishes of the council?
I move to a third.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, just I get some response to some of this. The, in 2005, the United States Supreme Court ruled in Kelo versus the City of New London that somebody made a distinction about public versus private use of eminent domain, which was a point well taken. But the existing law is you can use eminent domain for even public governments taking private property for private purposes, just to like, you know, get rid of some houses to put in some development that's going to generate more sales. That was, that was the spirit of Kelo, basically. And state governments have responded to that by changing their eminent domain laws. And I think, you know, this is, this is an ask, which means asking people to think about this issue. Washington State's eminent domain laws are potentially quite flexible in these areas, and we should be in discussion of that. Somebody mentioned targeting Cherry Point. This isn't targeting Cherry Point. This is vast swaths of Watcom County that might be subject to pipelines. There was a comment about the wording. I think it's actually up to the prosecutor how the final wording will appear. Misuse is not in the wording right now, as was stated. I don't see that in the language here. But, yeah, I, you know, I believe in asking people to send signals to elected officials, and I think this is a good opportunity to do that.
Ms. Brenner?
Whoops. Well, I'm in a quandary because I oppose all eminent domain for anything, including government. I don't trust my elected officials. That's not my job. I think that people need to be protected from government overreach or any other kind of overreach. But you said it doesn't have anything to do with Cherry Point. It most certainly does, without saying it, hits Cherry Point, and I'm really getting tired of all the abstract kind of generalized ways that Cherry Point is picked upon. I don't like it. I don't think there should be a difference between public or private. And you talk about direct democracy, then everybody's rights should matter, not just whoever has the most people. Let's see. And somebody mentioned citizens get to decide what's happening. Well, that's not, we, this is an advisory vote. I think it's got heavy political motivation to get people out to the polls and be angry and say, oh, well, these council members voted for it. They're, you know, good for them. It doesn't, it's not going to change a thing. This is not a local legal issue that we can locally change anything. Fine, talk to your federal and state officials. I think that's always a good idea, no matter where you are in an issue. But the, again, I am so opposed to eminent domain for anything. But if you just are going to pick on the petroleum and natural gas people, they're going to start using trains and trucks. And to me, that's not as safe, you know, nothing's totally safe in this world, but that's not as safe as pipe, most pipelines, I don't think. That's my opinion. I'm going to support this, but I'm going to make an amendment. I move to amend to do it for all eminent domain and not just any particular sector. That's my motion.
Would be all private companies?
Private and public. There would be, in my world, there'd be no eminent domain, period. And that's my motion.
I'll second that, so we can discuss that.
Then move and second it.
I mostly agree with what you have said. I'm also not a big favorite of eminent domain, and especially when it is related to for-profit purposes. So using the public good and using it for a for-profit purpose are two separate things. I think the whole purpose of eminent domain initiation many, many years ago was that where it served the public purpose of public good. But just talking about pipelines, I think it should be for all for-profit purposes. There should be no eminent domain used. But there could be a caveat that if the company can prove, they can, they can come and appeal to the council or to the government, whichever entity is related to, to make a case why it is so important, not just because it makes their cost low or makes them more profit. They can, they can design a different route, they can find people who are agreeable to them, right, rather than using this right? And there must be, must be, an overwhelming public good. Otherwise, use of eminent domain is just giving a concession for for-profit activities, which only few people can enjoy, the others can't.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, like I said, government isn't even any better about, oh, I like this, so if they won't give us easements or something, let's just condemn it by eminent domain. And if you don't think that can happen with government, then you have already forgotten that case in New York where that little old lady had lived in her house for many, many years, and government wanted to do something that, it was building all around her house, and then they decided, let's just get rid of her. And so they used eminent domain and got rid of her and her house. And there was a, that was, that was a big controversy. But it's like, that happens. Government does that. Who's, who are we to decide what is so good for the public that, you know, that we need to condemn somebody's property to do it? I don't think it's right, period. So that's my amendment. And I, if you guys are talking about eminent domain, let's talk about eminent domain. If you're talking about picking on certain industries more, then that's what this is doing.
Other discussion on Ms. Brenner's amendment? Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, no, I like, I like this discussion, but I think when a government, and you're right, governments have been given the power by the Supreme Court to use eminent domain inappropriately, and state laws have to be changed in response to that, and they have been. I think, if we look at this government, its use of eminent domain is quite limited. It is for a public purpose, and if it was not for a public purpose, I would never support it. So do we want to say that condemning property to type stuff through this county to ship it somewhere else is a public purpose? I don't see that. But what I want to do is get this discussion beyond, you know, just Watcom County and get it going in Olympia, and I think the people of Watcom County can, you know, have a say about it.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, that's fine, but I think this is very misleading. This whole proposal is misleading, and a lot of people do believe that we have the right to stop it, to change it at the local level. We do not, and, you know, I think it's, I think what it's going to do is get certain factions of the public out at the ballot box, which will, you know, be good for certain candidates. But I don't think it's right. I think it's, I think this is a misuse of the election process to try to create something, and I don't like it. You know, my amendment stands. I just want to get a vote on the amendment.
So just a procedural question for you, Ms. Brenner. How would you, how would you propose to amend this language?
I would make it real simple. The Watcom County Council opposes eminent domain by public or private entities, period.
That would be the entire resolution?
That would be the entire resolution.
Okay. Any further discussion on her amendment?
While I agree with your thought process, but making it absolute is not always possible. What you're trying to do is, is absolutely, it should not be there. I think that, that there are certain times, certain cases, where it does serve the public good, and overwhelmingly public good, and we should not limit that.
Ms. Brenner?
But again, it's public good according to whom. Everything we, we decide, there are people who support it and people who don't. And it's, it's a slippery slope. I think eminent domain is a slippery slope, and there seems to be more and more talk of it at our level about doing it for the public good, but not doing it for something else. And how do you not, to me, shipping liquid natural gas, LNG, yeah. I mean, I, we, our electricity is from natural gas, so I think there's a huge public good. I drive a car that uses petroleum. I think there's a huge public good. If we could pass something that would say, in fact, we tried to do that, I thought maybe we did it. I am totally opposed to shipping unrefined, really unrefined, not the fake thing that was, was brought up that included a lot of refined stuff, that we couldn't ship that. If we're going to, I think we should have more refining in Watcom County because we are the safest place in the world to do it. But these pipelines are part of the whole deal. And I just think, you know, you either are for eminent domain or you're not. When you start saying, well, you can't do it for this, but you can do it for that, then we're, we're going beyond what's fair, I think.
Mr. Donovan?
In fact, the public versus private purpose, or what is a public purpose and who defines a public purpose. If this government and these representatives of this government use eminent domain in a way that is objectionable, people can vote us out of office. If a private corporation does that, they have no say.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
They can vote us out of office, but the damage is already done, and I don't think that's right.
No, I, I think what the point Mr. Donovan is making, that there is a consequence of any government or elected representative is making that decision, but there is no consequence to the private enterprise, because they can go ahead and use this, there will be no consequence to, of them making their decision. I think that's what the point you were making.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Well, since politics in general are so polarized anyway, to put it in the words of a former county council member, all you need is 50% plus one. So you get 50% plus one of people supporting something for the public good, and you make a decision that, yeah, go ahead with eminent domain. It's not that easy to just, you know, it's an issue about eminent domain. It shouldn't be, well, what we think is good and what we think is bad. People need a lot more predictability than that.
I, I think that's the only system we have. Like it or not, there is no better system we have found yet. You may not like it at times, and the other part of that is common sense. Those are the only two things we have. I mean, we don't have a better system than that, which you can change and apply every time.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Well, yes, we do. You just vote for the amendment, and it's an opposition to eminent domain, and you talk about common sense. Common sense according to who? Whom? Sorry. You know, what one person thinks is common sense, another person, many times, has thought was horrible, so.
We will vote on Ms. Brenner's amendment to genericize this to be just a resolution against eminent domain, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? No. That fails.
How do you abstain?
One, that fails one to five to one abstention. No, one and four and one abstention. Okay, so we're back to the main motion of the resolution as it's written. Any further discussion on that? Do you want to, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'll just make a brief statement. Throughout my term on the council, I have done my best to avoid any potential conflicts, conflict of interests between my public goal and my own self-interests. I own property that would be impacted by one of the pipelines currently under consideration. Therefore, feel I have no, I have, I am obligated to recuse myself from this decision, and therefore, I must abstain in voting on this resolution as I have done on several other issues in the past.
Okay. Mr. Sedu?
I would propose an amendment that the wording should be changed from oil pipelines to for-profit purposes. The word for-profit purposes, rather than just singling out oil or gas pipelines.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I mean, it's better than it was, but it's still, I, you know, I have witnessed government do a number of things that are, that certain people think are in the public interest and other people don't. And I, something like this, somebody's property, somebody's home especially, next to their family, it's usually the most important thing. It's a home. It isn't just a house. It's a home. And I just think there's nothing that's more in the public interest than somebody's feeling about their own home. And I don't want to see us do that to anybody, whether it's the government or private.
Mr. Sedu?
I think if we apply that rule, then all the decisions we make as a government, even at county level or at the state level, will have the same, same ruling. The government does bad things to people.
Well.
No matter what we do, everybody never agrees to what we do. So we cannot use that criteria to say the governments are bad. That's the only government we have. We have to live with that.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
The difference is.
Look, I'll insert your microphone. I've been asked.
Okay. The difference is eminent domain is taking of private property. It's a taking. The other things, the restrictions we put on, some of them I am okay with, some of them I don't like. But that's not the same as actually taking someone's private property.
Mr. Donovan?
I appreciate Mr. Sedu's amendment, but I don't think we could do it. The RCW that is at issue in the warehouses and the motivation behind this is pipeline corporations. RCW 81.88.020, it's a specific exemption for pipeline corporations, so there isn't the other kind of broad, this is the specific issue, and those are the companies that are laid out in the warehouses potentially seeking to use eminent domain. It's a, it's a very specific statute.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Doesn't the federal government have the same kind of exemption for eminent domain? I believe it does. We've got a pipeline safety guy here.
I'm tempted to abstain from this whole discussion for similar reasons that Mr. Brown has, because I deal with this every day with different hats on, and I have some concerns about this. But when it comes to natural gas pipelines, those are regulated by FERC, and they will overrule even state.
That's the federal government.
Right. But the state eminent domain rules still apply. So this is an issue that's being discussed throughout the country right now because there's so many new pipelines going in the ground. Luckily, we don't have a whole lot of new ones coming through Washington State.
Yes.
Well, then, I'm going to abstain too, because I don't like it at all, but I, I don't want to vote on something that makes it look like I'm picking on. want to vote on something that makes it look like I'm picking on any one industry or any particular entity.
Okay, we are at, we're still discussing Mr. Sedu's amendment.
Oh, I'm talking about the whole thing.
No, no, that's.
Well, we still have process wise, we have to get through that. So any other discussion on his amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? No.
Abstain.
So that fails, that fails three to, one to three with two abstentions.
You can't, oh, I guess you can.
Did you abstain too far?
No.
Okay. Is that up?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Weimer?
We've got some question, I've got one amendment first on the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight wherass. That's where the word misuse.
What page?
Two, 91. Where the word misuse shows up, so I'd like to switch that with disuse. It says the potential use of eminent domain.
The which one?
Line forty-three.
Forty-three?
Yeah, forty-three.
What did you, what was your?
Get rid of the word misuse and change it to use.
Okay, I can support that.
That's my motion.
Okay, no others?
We'll do one at a time.
Okay. So we have that amendment in front, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose? So that passes. See, it was five to, six to, zero to one.
I should have just abstained. Oh, five to zero.
Oh, you abstained.
No, but I wish I had.
Not on this one.
No, I like, at least the word use is better than misuse.
Okay, so, Ms. Brenner, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I have some other questions. The very first wherass, the word geopolitical in there confuses me. I was wondering if that's a typo and it's supposed to just be the geological, it's next? Okay, let's remove the word geopolitical. Let's motion.
That's like the kennel thing earlier.
We have a second.
I second that.
Okay, we have a second. Ms. Brenner, discussion?
Yeah. Who wrote this? Who wrote it? Okay, so it just, you just kind of in the air wrote some of it, and then somebody wrote in the air? I was not even told anything about this, although I was told that a number of council members were contacted and were involved, and who did it? Who's behind this?
We have public meeting laws that don't allow us to talk about this until.
Well, something's wrong with our public meeting laws, since I was told that four council members agreed to this.
That's funny, because I haven't heard that yet.
Well, I just heard it today.
Okay, so we are talking about the removal of the word geopolitical at this point, so. Any discussion on that?
I had a question.
Okay.
Who wrote this? Who wrote the final thing? How was it done? That seems like something's missing from the public.
I'm saying I'm working with citizens on writing this.
Who are the citizens?
Remitting emails from you. I don't know why.
I haven't got one email on this.
I'm forwarding my emails.
I don't want you forwarding, I want to know. This is when we're voting. I want to know now. I want to know who, and I know there's, I don't know anything for sure, except that I don't know, and I didn't hear anything until this was in the packet. Not a word.
Any other discussion on Mr. Weimer's amendment?
Nobody's going to answer me.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose?
Abstain.
So we have two abstentions and four yeses, and zero noes. Okay, back to the original motion. Mr. Weimer, you have any more?
No, I've got some questions. I'm assuming that this is the last date where we can actually pass this and it will end up on the ballot, is that correct?
Yes.
So I wish we would have had this discussion a little earlier, because like, the fourth wherass talks about Kinder Morgan Pipeline recently indicated the prospectus of, you know, expanding their pipeline by twice as much, and I'd like to see that information, and there's none of that information attached. I don't know if anybody has it. I haven't seen that. There's been a lot of speculation, mainly from B.C. politicians encouraging Kinder Morgan to come through us versus keeping it up in B.C., but, you know, I kind of like to see that information. You know, the other thing that I'm torn on, and whether I'm still deciding whether I'm going to vote one way or another on this, is with my pipeline safety trust hat on, I deal with this issue every day. The reality is, the Wachem County Council has very little authority, if any authority, on eminent domain. Some of it would be the state for the hazardous liquid pipelines, for the gas pipelines, and it'd be FERC, and we have almost no authority there.
We don't.
And so I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't have anything to do with writing this.
I know.
I actually contacted Williams Pipeline and let them know that this was coming, so Tyson would have a chance to be on the committee to write, write one side or another. On the other hand, you know, this is an important discussion going on all over the country, and I think as Mr. Donovan has pointed out, you know, the best that could come out of this, I'm a little concerned, because we've already had one person come up here tonight and talk to us how it's great that we're going to limit the use of eminent domain. Well, we don't have that ability, so I don't want to get everybody ramped up in this community to think we're going to limit the use of eminent domain when we have no such authority. So I'm a little concerned about that. On the other hand, I think it would be a good community education, as Mr. Donovan has pointed out, to have this discussion, because we do have the authority to at least use our bully pulpit to ask the state legislature to change the eminent domain laws, and there are better eminent domain laws in other states in the country. For example, in Florida, if a company wants to use eminent domain, they have to pay for the attorney's fees for the people that they're going to condemn the land of. We don't have that in Washington State, that's one example. So there may be some benefits to having this community discussion, but since we don't know what group is bringing this forward, or how they're going to run a campaign, I don't really know if there's going to be any educational effort on this, or whether it's just going to be let everybody decide what they think we mean as this kind of moves forward between now and November. So I'm scratching my head about whether to go yes, no, or abstain.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I would think we could have a great educational process, putting it on the ballot when it's done by people who are running for office, who are going to be on the ballot, and there's going to, to me, this, I read it, and it's still, I still clearly see how people are going to, and then some people said it tonight, are going to, and I think we've gotten letters about it, that, you know, we should stop this, we should, this is a good way to stop this. Well, I'd like people to have all the information, like if we, if we did stop the use of eminent domain, what's the likelihood of increasing train and truck traffic? I mean, there's just so many things that if you're just going to do it on one particular part of, you know, if I wasn't so adamantly opposed to eminent domain, period, I wouldn't have had such a problem with this, because I, I don't support eminent domain. But I don't think picking on just one particular sector of the, of society, or the whatever, is the way to do it. And I do think that this clearly implies there is something we can do about it, and there isn't.
Mr. Donovan?
There is nothing here saying that we can block eminent domain, and it's our job, you know, and the prosecutor's job to make sure the language is stating this is an advisory vote about what we want our state official to do. The wherasses are spelling out a particular RCW, because it is just pipeline companies that our state's eminent domain laws give specific exemptions to. If it was, you know, ice rinks, or bowling alleys, or something like that, that's not in the RCWs, it's pipelines. And as for the, yeah, some of this is media reports, I don't know that in terms of where the, where the numbers are coming from. But this is a fact of our state law, and it is, it is particular, it's not picking on it, that's the law only applies to pipeline companies. And it gives them special status that other corporations don't have in terms of their ability to use eminent domain. And how do we move state law? I think that's something that the people of Wachem County can have a voice in.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Well, since there's a whole lot of information here that is making claims, that we don't even know if they're accurate, I think the thing to do is take the time to do an educational discussion, and, you know, lots of public meetings with different parts of the county and all that stuff. I just, this is totally biased. I mean, it's not said in an objective way, it's biased, making claims about, you know, different amounts and all that stuff, so.
Mr. Sedu?
I think I suggest that take all the names out, and these barrels or whatever, or just totally eliminate the wherass number four, and then number two, take the Williams Pipeline name out. I mean, to me, it's worthwhile discussion of having this discussion, and as the RCW says, that it is applicable only to the pipelines, we can have that discussion. But I'm not really saying that we have to have those names in there, because they do not serve a bigger purpose of having the name or not having the name, but having the discussion is not a bad idea.
Mr. Donovan?
In terms of bias in what we're putting on the ballot, I think this council just could have jail tax on the ballot without calling it a jail tax.
Well, that was a mistake, and we're supposed to, at request, that they fix it. And that was one of those things, but that wasn't brought up at our meeting about the word jail, and I didn't even see it, or I would have said, put jail in the title. And we do have the option of requesting that, that word be put in there.
My last, I'm sorry, I didn't need to sound that sorry, but it is the prosecutor who, the prosecutor determines what the language on the ballot will be.
Right, but we can request it.
Yeah.
This, yeah.
So, Mr. Sedu, were you proposing an amendment? It kind of sounded like that's.
No, I'm proposing to Mr. Donovan if he.
Yes. Get rid of the fourth wherass, get rid of wherasses that people are uncomfortable with.
Yeah. How about if I'm uncomfortable with all of them?
Oh, you're.
So, so you're getting rid of the number two and three, or just taking out the name?
Wherass, they've taken out all the names.
The names.
So it would be, so it would be, how about the second wherass, your A pipeline company?
Yeah.
Take out, Williams, take out Oklahoma. Take out the Island Gas Connector.
Yeah.
To build A Pipeline.
Yeah.
Whereas A Company has applied for, take out the entire fourth wherass.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
You're agreeable for that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have that amendment rolled into our main motion now. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
So that fails three to zero to three.
I'd like to explain my abstention a little deeper, too. Not only with my pipeline safety trust hat, do I do this all the time, you know, and we have some stances with my other job on that would put me in conflict with this, I've also just signed a contract in the Utilities and Transportation Commission to review pipeline safety in the state of Washington, and I think this would put me in conflict with some of that also.
Conflict of interest.
Okay, so we will move into our open session. During the open session, members of the public will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest. If your last name is complicated, please spell it for us, and make sure to speak into the microphone. And again, please use this podium over here. So we will now open the public session.
People should maybe line up over there instead of coming down.
A lot of tables.
You can stay out of the garage van, look down here.
My name is Christopher Deille, D-E-I-L-E. This is regarding the court ordering of people into religious-based programs as an incarceration reduction alternative. What makes this sound reasonable is that purportedly there are secular choices offered. You know, if somebody doesn't want to go into the religious programs, they can do secuers. But the secular choices are ephemeral, fly-by-night alternatives, which are neither, which are either unreliable or non-existent in many locations, leaving the choice like AA, Celebrate Recovery, or Siberia. So it really doesn't pan out. I've never been quartered myself, thank God, but because my friend killed himself in a seminary, I'm really taking an interest in this, because it's going on all over the country. And I wanted to point out, the, when I went to a Bible school up in Alaska, I'm going to give a perspective about religion that people may not have, and this is my own perspective that I took from studying the Bible. I've always wondered, how can the conservative, religious conservatives think that the Bible supports torture? I found it. It's in Hebrews 10. That's where, if a, if a person keeps sinning, okay, let me say this very quickly, Reinhold Niebuhr points out that according to Christianity, that we are never entirely free of original sin. That's why we're not perfect. Okay? In Hebrews 10, it involves torture of the imperfect. And this is how, if a person keeps sinning, they can expect worse punishment than those that were put to death without mercy for denying of Bob Moses in the Old Testament. Without mercy, that's torture. Tortured to death for being imperfect. Okay? Now, and then you have the Old Testament, 29, Leviticus 29, if a priest's daughter is playing a harlot, she should be burned to death. Okay? Bounce that up to the New Testament. Jesus came not to do away with the law, but to fulfill it. Fulfill the law of burning a woman to death. How does that equate with a Jesus la la lie? And finally, the verse with, on the Old Testament, if a man died, if a man lied with mankind as with womankind, both of them have committed abomination, and shall surely be put to death, their blood shall be upon them. That's Leviticus 2013. It's the same principle, you know, Jesus came to fulfill the law and not to do away with it. So Jesus affirmed that those things were God's will at some point in time. And when, and when the churches say that we welcome gay people, you know, come to our church, we're all-inclusive, it's bogus, because not one church that I've ever been involved in has ever unequivocally disavowed those verses, and said, God never said those things. Okay? They give some sort of qualification to say that it was God's will at some point in time. It never was. All right? I'm really upset about this, and people are being quartered into religious programs, and there's nothing I can do about it.
My name is Joseph Towne, and it's obvious that I have a speech about men. I'm here to talk today about the false actress of Christianity and proposal 1552. Where down the streets is everyone is going to burn hell forever? The city of Wilhelm, which is in Wachem County, has experienced the exquisite question of the cross for the last few years. I recommend to people they do not subscribe to this delusion of view of Christianity, because I believe there is a difference between a Christian that hates sinners than a Christian that hates them. I often say, if I thought that what some Christians believe were true, then I would be an atheist. The reason I gave this speech to county is because the city has served me a million times before. On a national level, there is a belief amongst Christians that Hitler Clinton was going to do the devil's work. By placing a billionaire bully in the Oval Office, they are perpetuating the very thing they were trying to prevent. I think they should ask themselves, what would Jesus do? The city recently passed an ordinance that they recommend to people that they do not sign the petition. sign the petition of proposal 1552, which concerns the opposite sex using the bathroom. This will cause Republicans and other people, mainly fathers, who wait for their daughters outside ladies' rooms to vote in this city. Just because you oppose the LGBT community doesn't mean your intentions are to bash them. Unfortunately, I have recently seen gay people being bashed in the city in the name of Christ. I don't wish to be mistaken, I think there's a lot of good people who go to church on Sunday. I just wish some of them would read their own book and ask themselves, what would Jesus do? The answer to that question can be found in Matthew 7:1. The question I have for voters of this city is, do all or any of the candidates reflect your views? I would be suspicious of any candidate that claims worship as a part of their platform. The goal I believe America needs to build is between church and state. Thank you, and God bless America while still here.
Anyone else like to speak to us during the open session? Seeing no one, we will close the open session and turn it over to finance.
Mr. Chair, the Wauken County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today. We, first item we considered was an ordinance amending the 2017 Wauken County budget, eighth request, in the amount of $851,061. It's received, a vote of two, zero, with Mr. Mann excused. And I so move...
Okay, we have that motion before us. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
I'm not, can I move to amend it, or does it have to go back totally if I do that? Karen, or Dane, it would have to go back? Okay, I move to amend to take out the HIP funding.
What page you on, Ms. Brenner?
Oh, it's on 68, let's see, six, just a second. 68, 69, it's page 69 and 70. And I asked today in committee, it was about the, it's the stormwater fund to fund additional support for homeowner incentive program. And I definitely support money going to the Conservation District for, because they have a great, you know, they have really good ways to work with the people who this affects. What I don't support is giving people money to do what they ought to be doing on their property or something else. I mean, I just don't think it's right. A lot of us have done amazing improvements on our property regarding stormwater. We didn't get paid for it. We did it because we didn't want to have stormwater runoff. And I just have a real problem with doing that. So I move that we remove the Conservation, I mean, the stormwater fund to fund additional support for homeowner incentive program, $385,000.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I have a second, so I can talk against it. First, I want to point out that the city co-funds this with the county. They've been spending more money on it, that this is money to try to mitigate stormwater from landscaping going into our drinking water, to help comply with orders that are telling us that we have to do something to save our drinking water. But I think Councilmember Brenner's bringing up a really important point, is we are doing this because we have not been tough with regulations telling people that they have to do. We're essentially incentivizing them to change their landscaping and paying for part of their cost. We just recently had a presentation at one of our other meetings about the funds that we are using to support the other stormwater mitigation programs. Those funds are falling short and we're burning into reserves. So this council and this county has to have a discussion about, what do we do? How, you know, do we just give up on cleaning the lake? Do we have a stronger regulatory arm, telling people they have to do stuff and we're not going to incentivize them to do it? Or do we say, we'll help you for this next few years, and if you don't do this now with some help from the county, you're going to have to do it and pay for the whole thing on your own? Or we're going to have to talk about new funding mechanisms for stormwater control around Lake Wauken? So I support keeping it in there, but I think this is, this is a fundamental discussion that we have to have about how we're going to be spending our money on this stuff.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to read from this, from the document provided support on this.
What page?
Page 82, under the title Funding Amount and Source. It says, "This request has no net impact on the budget for Wauken County fund balances. Further term of the inter-local agreement with the city of Bellingham, the city will reimburse Wauken County from expenses incurred to manage and implement the HIP above the county's annual budget of $100,000." So the first thing is it says no impact on the county. The second is, we don't have an option of going onto people's properties and telling them to do this. Our best option in these cases, as in most pollution issues, is education rather than some form of legal enforcement.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I don't live in the city of Bellingham, but I have a, I just have a philosophical problem with paying people to not pollute their neighbors. You know, my rights end where they infringe on somebody else's. And if stuff's coming off of someone's property and it can be shown it is, then they should make sure it doesn't, period. I just don't see us giving people money to do that. Because I'll tell you what, you're going to have a much harder time. I mean, you're right, it would be nice if we had done something already, but I'll tell you, I brought this up when we were dealing with Birch Bay Water and Sewer District, or no, Birch Bay, BBWARM, Birch Bay Watershed, I hate acronyms, what? Yeah, whatever it is. And I disagreed and didn't vote for it because they were charging everybody instead of the people who are creating the problem. So I can't do that and then say, but this is okay. It's not okay.
Mr. Sedu.
I think that what you're proposing is a good thought, but you are actually proposing more regulation. You're saying that we should make some laws, a regulation, for people to treat their stormwater, or we will fine you, or we will tax you, or something, which is so hard to manage, and there will be so much more money to do that. I, I agree with you that we shouldn't give money for people to do that, what they should be doing. But it doesn't work in real ways. We have to incentivize people to do the right thing, but the alternate to that is, is more regulation. That's the only way I see the other way around. Otherwise, we should say, we ignore that, maybe let's keep polluting the lake the way it is, and we'll worry about 50 years from now.
Ms. Brenner.
I'm not as sure that we're talking about a lot more regulation, because right now, state law and lots of different laws that affect us say you cannot pollute somebody else's property. You cannot be the cause of pollution on anybody else's property. You're not allowed to do it.
I agree, but how would you determine? I mean, a good thought, but I'm saying in practice, how would you know, I'm not polluting this? Somebody has to check me. If you don't check it, it goes on. That's why this is what is called a regulation. When somebody does something wrong, we have to have a rule to stop them. Otherwise, it's on our system.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, we already have something that says that these people are eligible. Why would they be eligible if they're not the cause of the problem? And if they are the cause of the problem, they should have to fix it. I mean, somebody's already gone through this and said, yeah, this is coming off here, this is, somebody did the work. They're just dealing with it differently.
Mr. Brown, then, Mr. Wymer.
I'd just like to, perhaps it might make Ms. Brenner a little bit more comfortable to realize that certainly a reasonable chunk of this money, as I understand it, would go to pay for staff to both identify problem areas, educate people, and then design the solutions. So it's hardly people running around, you know, giving checks out.
Mr. Wymer.
Yeah, I'm going to speak against pulling this, too. You know, this has been a program that we've been moving forward on for a long time. I think we need to keep that momentum. If, something will remind me when we get to other business, I'd like to make a motion that we have a discussion at our next meeting about how to more adequately and equitably fund this program, because as we've been discussing in our water work sessions, our, our money for water programs is going the wrong direction, and we have a funding problem. And I think we need to have a discussion soon about both forming some kind of a district around the Lake Wauken watershed to help fund these programs, so people that are polluting are paying for the fix, or at least have some skin in the game. And I think we need to have a discussion about whether we should, at some point in the future, make this mandatory, so we put people on notice that a decade from now, you're going to have to do stuff in your yard to quit polluting the lake. Use this incentive program now, or pay for it yourself later. That's been an ongoing discussion with the Lake Wauken Policy Group, but we never seem to make a decision. So remind me at the end of the meeting, and we'll try to schedule that.
Brenner.
Well, that's the problem. There was something Councilmember Brown said. What did you just say? Because there's something that I wanted to...
Well, the money is used for identifying problem properties.
I get it.
Training people, designing the solutions.
Exactly. And actually, that was the question I asked today. I said, is this money specifically for the Conservation District to educate and work with people on how to fix their problems? Or is it money for, to give to people to do, to fix their problems? And whoever it was from staff said it's both. And I said, well, I'd support it if it's the part about, I'd love to support the Conservation District going out there and helping people figure it out. I don't support giving people a certain amount of money per square foot that they do something to. There's just something, it just seems so unfair about that.
Just a point of clarity, the Conservation District doesn't get any of this money?
Well, excuse me, but when I asked today, they said, okay, I'm just telling you what, I was there today, and I'm telling you what the staff person said. The staff person said it's for both.
No, but if you look at the documents, Conservation District is not...
I hear you. That's why I asked the question, and he said it's for both. And it'll be on the record if the tape works after what happened today. But, yeah.
Mr. Sedu.
I think people first apply for it, get it approved, so that there is a net benefit of that. They don't, just don't say, I'm going to go fix my lawn and, and I'm going to get $20,000 or $6,000 for that. It's not like that. It is that, first they say, this much of this stormwater, this much it is contributing to the phosphorus or other contamination, then they, the county or the city people go and assess that, that this assessment is right, and then they say, okay, it will cost them X dollars. They go and spend the money. They do not get all of the money. They, if they spend $20,000 to fix it, they get only small piece of that, maybe $3,000 or $4,000. Like, this is like an incentive. This is not like being told as, as this is a, like a check-writing scheme that somebody can say, hey, I've got a lawn to fix, though give me $10,000. This is not like, it's not like that. They have to go spend the money, they have to do according to the plan, which is approved, and then they get just small portion of that money.
Brenner.
Well, I don't think $6,000 is a small portion of anything. And I'm just saying, I don't think we're sending the right message. If I do something to my neighbor's property, I should be fixing it. And when I say neighbors, I mean everybody in Lake Wauken, if they're doing anything that contributes to negative, you know, water quality in the watershed. And, and I could go on and on and on, because I, we did it on our own property. And it's, I learned a lot by doing it and not by getting money back, and I just don't think it's right. And I'm not in the Lake Wauken watershed.
I just want to...
Mr. Sedu.
If everybody is like Barbara, we don't need a government. We can do fine.
Gee, I think everybody should be like me. No, actually, I don't. I don't, I swear. I didn't, I was just joking. I do not think anybody should have to be like me.
Okay. All right, where are we? We're on an amendment to remove the line item for the homeowner incentive program. It's been seconded. Any more further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No, sorry.
Oh.
I voted wrong, nineteen may vote.
Okay, let's do that again.
Okay.
All those in favor of removing that line item, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That fails. One, two, five, with Mr. Mann excused.
Mr. Chair, the next item was a...
No, we're not done yet.
And Brenner opposed.
We're not done yet. That was the amendment.
Just keen to move on.
So now we're at the, back to the main motion for the, for the entire budget request. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Donovan.
We did determine that the, there was something that listed that the Williams Way repairs is wheat mine, right?
Yes.
That was, I'm looking for.
Yeah. There was a typo. That was stated in the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Okay, that passes, five to one, with Mr. Mann excused.
And Ms. Brenner opposed. How come you never say?
With Ms. Brenner opposed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now you can continue.
Resolution, the next item was item two, resolution amending the 2017 flood control zone district and subzone budgets. Third request, in the amount of $15,000, in this case, the council is acting as the Wauken County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received a vote of two, with one excused, and I so move that I'd like to explain something.
Okay.
Just for clarity, the money for this is technically not coming out of the flood control zone. It was taken from the general fund, put into the flood fund for consistency, to then come out again.
We have that motion before us, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
No.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes. That passes, four to two.
Mr. Chair, there was nothing else for fines.
Okay, we are at an ordinance ordering an election to determine the formation of the Lummi Island Park and Recreation District. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, because it doesn't seem like people really understand, they keep asking us to vote for this. We have no choice. They got the sign, the amount of signatures they needed. It's just, I don't even understand why it even goes through this pretend thing with us that we actually have a choice. If they get those signatures, they get to put it on the ballot. That's the way it is. And I keep writing people back and telling them, that's not, you know, that it's on there, it's nothing we can do about it. But I don't think a lot of people actually picked up on that. Has anyone else been getting any calls or emails about it? Yeah. So it's, this is just a pass-through thing that we don't, we can't say no to.
Any other discussion?
What would happen if we did?
Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes, six to zero. The next item is to appoint members to serve on the pro and con statement writing committees for the sales and use tax for public safety purposes proposition. We have in your...
What color?
Pink.
Pink.
Pink. First page are the pro committee volunteers. But we'll start there. Mr. Brown?
Madam Clerk, could you just clarify, how many people are we allowed to vote for for each pro and con statement?
Three. There can be three people, three members per committee.
I move we approve them all?
Yeah. No, it's three.
You can do that.
We don't, we need three, we got three names.
He's just talking about this sheet.
Oh, this sheet? I thought it was, oh, the pro, okay.
Thank you for volunteering.
Me?
No, I said I thank these people for volunteering, and we have three names with three positions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all three of these pro committee volunteers for the jail tax. volunteers for the jail tax. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes unanimously. Okay, same thing for the Lummi Island Park and Recreation District.
What about the con?
No, actually.
Oh, sorry, yeah, there's another page for that. You're right.
There is another slide that's there.
Really?
Okay, so on the next page of the pink substitute version, we have the con committee volunteers. So...
I move approval of all four.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, in this case, we will have the clerk call the roll. And so we can vote, because there's four, we have to vote.
Can't we have all four?
Or three?
No.
You can't have four?
I just said that.
Oh.
I just, I voted all four.
Why did you?
He nominated.
Oh, to nominate. Gotcha, okay.
Tough, tough room, man.
Well, it's a long day. You ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Barbara Brenner? Oh, pick the three? Correct. Josh, Doug, and Dan. Red Brown?
Joy, Doug, and Dan.
Barry Buchanan?
Josh, Doug, and Dan.
Todd Donovan?
Joy, Doug, and Dan.
Ken, oops, sorry. Sat Paul Sedu?
Josh, Doug, and Dan.
Carl Weimer?
Josh, Joy, and Doug.
It's a hung jury. Nobody got four votes, right?
Uh, Josh did.
I think Dan, oh, Dan did.
Everybody but Joy got four votes? Correct. Oh, you had this all planned, huh?
Good. So Josh got four, Doug got four, and Dan got four. Is that what you're saying, Dana?
Oh, that's... Doug got five. Oh. Well, if only one got less than four, aren't the rest by acclamation or something?
Dan, go ahead.
They all got, they all got four, no?
Say that, I'm sorry, I'm counting. Well, it sounds like one got less than all the others. There was...
One got more than all the others.
One got more, but it looks like one got less. One, two, three, four voted for Josh. Doug got one, two, three, four, five. Dan, one, two, three, four, five. And Joy, three. Well, then they, then it's...
It's besides then.
Okay.
Doug got six.
Oh, gee. Well, he's on there. We know that. Oh, you're right. I wrote D, 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 and then Doug. Okay, you're correct. Sorry. So...
So it's Josh, Doug, and Dan. Now we will move on to the Lummi Island Park and Recreation District.
And that's...
This one's in there's salmon.
Salmon, yeah.
I'll move to approve the three who have volunteered for the pro committee.
Okay.
Okay, good move and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes unanimously.
Oh, look at you.
Now for the con, we have four.
Mr. Chair, I nominate all four.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to nominate all four. Please call the roll.
Carl Weimer?
Patricia, Michelle, and Wynne.
Red Brown?
Patricia, Michelle, and Wynne.
Barry Buchanan?
Patricia, Michelle, and Wynne.
You forgot me. I'm getting there. It's not in alphabetical order this time? Barbara Brenner? Whatever. Um, yeah, Patricia, Michelle, Wynne. Todd Donovan?
Patricia, Michelle, and Wynne.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Catherine, Patricia, and Michelle.
I have one vote for Catherine, six votes for Patricia, six votes for Michelle, and five votes for Wynne.
Correct.
So it's Patricia, Michelle, and Wynne are appointed to the con committee for the Lummi Island Park and Recreation District. Okay, so, one note of, even though there's only three people that are appointed to those committees, a committee can seek the advice of other community members should they want to. So just wanted to get that out there on record so everyone knows. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Can they seek our advice?
It's a good question. Karen shrugged, so I guess that means it's okay.
Okay. Anybody wants my opinion, let me know. Well, if they want it.
We're moving on now to executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We are, we have a county executive requesting confirmation of appointments to the new behavioral health advisory committee.
This is a hard one. Geez. Wait a second.
Now, where is all this?
Three oh four. This is a real hard one.
This is a hard one. We needed a voting sheet for hooking.
Yeah. Well, not just that, there's so many good people. I want to be the last one to vote on this. Three oh four. Look at, look at, look at.
So is this, uh, this is how many positions are open and how many positions that are coming forward? So we could just vote on the whole package, right, Jack?
Oh, yeah, that's all we do, right.
That's all we gotta do.
It's a confirmation vote. It's not a...
Okay. I would accept a motion for confirmation.
I move to confirm.
Second. Okay, it's a move and a second to confirm these folks. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Oh, I'm glad because it was a tough one.
Uh, we have two items for introduction this evening. Yeah. Oh, yeah, five, five to zero, one out of the room, yeah. Thank you, I didn't see that. Okay, so now we're on to introduction. We have two items to, for consideration tonight. Would entertain a motion to introduce?
I'll move introduction.
Mr. Chair, there are three on the list. Which two would you introduce?
Neither. This is the draw.
Just that you need to have that on the record.
Okay, we had three and one was pulled.
Number three?
Mm-hmm. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes six to zero. Committee reports. This morning, we had a special committee of the whole. We started out by recognizing all those involved with the, the award that was given out by the governor today. It was the Governor's 2017 Smart Communities Award. It was awarded to Wacom County Planning and Development Services. It was a great presentation and everybody got plaques. It was kind of cool. Or not plaques, but sufficient. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, so I just want to say, it seems, next time the growth hearings board, Growth Management Hearings Board, or the Supreme Court start picking on us, we should flash this in their face and tell them we've done a really good job. And they, yeah, I mean, I think we should take that, this to the growth hearings board and inspire our legislators down there to fix the Hearst thing. Because we did it right.
Okay. Uh, the other items we had on our special committee of the whole this morning was continuation of our review of the critical areas ordinance. We still have a ways to go on Articles Eight and Nine. That was it for special committee of the whole. What about finance?
What about mine?
Not there yet.
We're not? Oh, I'll trust you.
Nothing else for finance, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, um, we had another committee of the whole meeting that was an executive session. We talked about updates on negotiation strategy, planning, and planning regarding collective bargaining. And we also had continuation of discussion and consultation with Chief Civil Deputy Dan Gibson in the matter of negotiations for various project-related easements. Now we're coming to public works.
Okay. Um, we, what we had first was a presentation by Mark Bier, 2020 Engineering, regarding sustainable water resource management. Mark is well-respected and admired throughout the whole state, even outside the state. And we are, he's such a gem to have in our community. And unfortunately, we had so many things on the agenda that, you know, we had to kind of squeeze. So I do encourage councilmembers, if you've got questions or comments you'd like to make, please do them in writing to Mark and copy the rest of us. I think it would be great. He's an amazing person. I could listen to him all day. Okay. Then we also had an incredible presentation by Dez Scooby, Executive Director of Unity Care Northwest regarding agency services and the North Wacom expansion. And I'm so supportive of what they're doing. And I, I hope that, where did, did Jack leave? Oh, well, I hope that we can actually help finance this besides, besides, you know, going after grant money. It's, it's an amazing way that they're working with people who are, have fallen through the cracks. Either that, they do sliding scale, so that's really good for people whose insurance doesn't really do it. They do dental, which most people's medical doesn't cover. They do behavioral health and a lot of other services that have been costing people a lot of money. And they, they made a presentation. If anybody wants a copy, I'll give it to you. It's wonderful. Then the last thing we had is a discussion of a proposal to move forward with a pharmaceutical stewardship program in Wacom County. What that means is a program to, when people don't use up all their, all their prescriptions, a way that they can return them somewhere safely where they're not gonna, you know, fall in the hands of people who might misuse them, or be, or ugh, or even worse, get into the waters of Wacom County. There were, I couldn't believe it, there's 26, they identified 26 pharmaceuticals in, in salmon. And, ah, that really grossed me out. I mean, I hadn't even thought of that. So a lot of that stuff, when they, when it goes through the wastewater treatment facilities, doesn't get rid of prescription drugs. So we're, it's awful. And if we can set something up, I think it would be an incredible savings in, in people's health and safety in Wacom County. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, planning? Yeah, we had three items in planning this morning. One of them was a discussion about the marijuana waiver requirements that we passed earlier this evening. One of them was a review of the cumulative impact surface coverage standards that we had a hearing on at our last meeting. And we made some slight little light tweaks to that and will be introduced at our next meeting. And one was just a discussion with the planning department about some amendments they're working on to consolidate land use and development procedures all into one place instead of having them spread out in three or four or five different places. So it'll, should be easier for the public to understand what the procedures are. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Well, except for one thing. They're, they're trying to be more efficient by having what goes to the hearing examiner, if it's appealed, to go straight to Superior Court instead of coming to us. And that's one of the places that I hope we don't do it because I think, I think the county council is a good, you know, backstop to, to something going off and off into, into courts. And we have, yeah, we, we can look at things a little more individually, which I like. So I don't want us to lose that.
That was all? That was all for planning. Okay, we'll go to other items of business and we'll start with you, Mr. Weimer.
All right. Dana just reminded me that I was gonna do motions. So, so I'd just like to move, or at least get the head nods of the council that we schedule, that some made natural resources, maybe administrative services, one of the committees, a discussion with Public Works about potential funding sources for Lake Wacom programs at our next meeting.
Just wondering if that's more suitable for surface water work session?
Yes, but I don't think we have another one of those until fall. And it'd be nice to give them some direction before they move into the legislative.
Well, I'm, I'm happy either way. If we enroll in a light schedule, we can figure it out. It doesn't make much difference.
We have head nods?
Yeah.
Um, wait, as long as people who aren't causing any problems do not have to pay. Instead of doing this blanket, everybody pays. I don't think that's right.
Well, we have a discussion if we need it.
Okay, yes. Okay, good.
Just keep going down the line and we'll get to you. Mr. Brown, you have other items of business?
No other items of business. No council member updates.
Great. One thing, and I thought the executive said we would be dealing with this, but we haven't done it yet. We got a letter on July 17th to the council and to Executive Laos. And it's about a really serious water problem on these people's property that has been going on for, since, when was, oh, 2005 or something, a really long, long time. And it's, it's destroying a lot of their property. They can't get it, their equipment, they can't do anything. And this is all being caused by a beaver dam. And I mean, I'm all for the beavers, but at some point, when they start creating a really big mess, we've got to, we've got to balance things. And this is one of those cases. It seems like, they sent pictures and everything. I mean, they're all underwater because of the beaver dam, not because of flow, you know, natural flows or anything. And I, I would like to see us request the executive come forward with some, he's got this, it went to him. And in fact, Arden sent it over to us, but we got it anyway. So you guys, we should have gotten it twice. I just feel terrible for this person. And I'd like to see us work on that. Maybe put it in, what committee? Natural Resources or Public Works? Public Safety, Public Health? I'd take it in my committee. What do you want to do?
Natural Resources or Public Works. Probably Natural Resources.
Okay. Carl, is that okay with you? Okay, for Natural Resources, if you would schedule it. You want this copy?
I keep canceling.
Oh, you're the chair.
It's pretty much the critical areas to me right now.
Well, but this is, this is time critical. This is in the summer, this is going on. If we don't get something done by fall, this property is going to be completely uninhabitable by humans.
I think it plays in a broader discussion we've been having about water management.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that Business Advisory Committee, we did approval. I had brief discussion with Mr. Brown also. We should bring it back so we can go through the final approval and then take steps to implement it.
And I had one thing, just in the, kind of in the form of a question. We've gotten some, some emails from folks wondering why the word jail isn't in the, the, appears in the title of the ordinance that we used to put this on the ballot. Did you get any feel for what our options are on this? Dana, you were working on it earlier.
I did, I did talk to Dan Gibson and he said you can put in a request, make a motion to request that the prosecutor's office make sure that that word is contained in that initial, I don't want to say title. It's the title of the title, kind of.
Okay, then I would move, I would move that we request the prosecutor's office to make sure the, the word jail is in the ballot measure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Councilmember updates. You're good?
I'm good.
I'm good?
Good. Well, maybe I'm not good.
Good.
You're good?
Good.